Good afternoon. Welcome to the April 11th Board of County Commissioners' meeting. We're going to ask Commissioner Davis to do our Pledge of Allegiance, lead us in that, and I will do a word of invocation. But I would also like to take a moment of silence before the invocation. Two weeks ago, we did another moment of silence for Nashville, and now we're doing it for Lexington, Kentucky. So hopefully, we can bear that in mind, and leaders of our country can listen to our mental health problems and what's happening with these shootings. So it brings me a heavy heart today to be doing this two meetings in a row. But if you are willing to stand with us or able to stand with us, please do so. I'm going to be thinking about the three families and the first responders that -- actually, there's 13 families, excuse me. So if you just take a moment of silence, please. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for today, and thank you for our health and our blessings that you've given us. I pray for wisdom today for all of us up here, and that we do right by the citizens of Citrus County, and that we're wise in our decisions and our votes. Lord, I pray for the families in Lexington, Kentucky, and the brand-new rookie police officer that is struggling right now to -- struggling for his life. Pray for the five families that lost loved ones and the other eight that are going through this trauma. Pray, Lord, that this will be the last that we see of a mass shooting and disgruntled employees and the mental health issues, and that you could help heal our country and bring us together, no matter what side of the aisle that we're on, that we can come together and know that our lives and the lives of our citizens are precious, and protect our children, Lord. Thank you for all that you've done for us, and thank you for having us be born in the greatest country in the world. Do this today in your name, and thank you again for the blessing of life and showing us grace. In your name, amen.
Amen. Well said, Chair.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Okay, at this time, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you call roll call?
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. This is the 11th day of April 2023. In attendance are Chair Ruthie Schleba, First Vice Chair Holly Davis, Second Vice Chair Rebecca Pace, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Diana Finnegan, County Administrator Steve Howard, and Assistant County Attorney Beth Antrim.
Thank you. Board, at this time, I'm looking for the approval of the agenda. I'm also asking the Administrator if there's any additions or deletions to this agenda before we approve it.
There are. G4 provides services, Safe Build LLC; G5 is Office of Utility Regulation Position; and there was also additional information, G1 for Monkey Island.
Additional information?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, what is your pleasure?
Chair, move approval of the agenda with the addition of G4, G5, and additional information on G1.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Davis; I have a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes 5-0. The consent agenda. Would you like, Board, to approve it in its entirety or take it one by one?
Chair, motion to approve the consent agenda, B. 1 through 8.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. C. We're at Item C, Proclamations, Awards, and Presentations. I have -- we have six proclamations today, and I am looking for a motion to approve the proclamations.
Madam Chair, motion to approve Items C, 1 through 6.
Thank you.
Second.
Second motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any further board discussion? I see that we have Minority Health, and it's better health through better understanding, if y'all are here today. Nice little motto there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0. Board, if you'd like to join me down front, please.
Will those individuals representing National Volunteer Week please come forward? Whereas it is by the talents, generosity, and energy of volunteers that continue to be Citrus County's most valuable resource, and our community would be deprived of numerous programs, services, and activities without the support and involvement of volunteers. And whereas AmeriCorps Senior in RSVP volunteers collectively served 50,820 hours at a value of $1,522,055 in 2022. And whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all problems. And whereas through the dedication and devotion of volunteers stems the true strength of citizenship. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 16 through 22, 2023, National Volunteer Week in Citrus County, and urges all citizens to help recognize and renew the volunteer spirit of Citrus County by committing to address the needs of our community through service. Executed this 11th day of April 2023.
Thank you to the public and to our county commission, community services staff, for your unwavering support and acknowledgement of the exceptional volunteer efforts in Citrus County. It is with great pleasure that we celebrate National Volunteer Week and honor and recognize the invaluable contributions of our volunteers through the county. We are proud to stand alongside our volunteers who embody the very best of our county and serve as a shining example of what can be achieved when we work together towards a common goal, and we thank you.
Thank you. Would those individuals representing the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week please come forward? Whereas emergencies or disasters can occur at any time requiring law enforcement, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical services is critical to life safety, property conservation, and hazard mitigation. And whereas the safety of our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who contact the Citrus County Sheriff's Office, Public Safety Answering Point. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical personnel by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas each telecommunication officer has exhibited dedication, compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their mission in the past year. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the week of April 10 through April 15 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and joins in honoring the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our citizens safe in Citrus County, Florida. Executed on this 11th day of April 2023. Would those individuals representing the National Volunteer Appreciation Week please Whereas Citrus County recognizes there are hundreds of volunteers in our community who utilize their time and talent on a daily basis to make a difference in the lives of children, adults, and the elderly citizens of Citrus County. And whereas the backbone of the volunteer program of the Citrus County Sheriff's Office is the dedicated members both on the front lines and behind the scenes of the daily operation of the Citrus County Sheriff's Office. And whereas Citrus County Sheriff's Office volunteers provide an invaluable service to our communities through their selfless contribution of their time, talent, and expertise. The volunteers have affected a positive influence on Citrus County through their actions, words, and deeds. And whereas hundreds of volunteers work in our community to make it safer and enrich the lives of citizens and visitors by connecting them daily as they provide a variety of services. And whereas our volunteer force is a great Citrus County treasure, and we recognize and appreciate those who have stepped up and answered the call to service in Citrus County. And whereas our volunteer force is an integral part of the success of maintaining the positive lifestyle enjoyed by Citrus County residents and visitors. And whereas our volunteers not only improve the lives of citizens and visitors, but also care for our pets and animals. And whereas Citrus County Sheriff's Office volunteers serve in approximately 23 different capacities and save in excess of $1 million of public revenue. During 2022, CCSO volunteers donated 50,324 hours to their community. And whereas Citrus County takes great pleasure in honoring the volunteers of our community and conveying our sincere gratitude and appreciation for their committed, selfless, and compassionate efforts, we celebrate volunteers who lend their time, talent, and voice to make a difference in the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the week of April 16 through 22, 2023, as National Volunteer Appreciation Week, and joins in saluting the unparalleled services of the volunteers who have given countless hours for the betterment of our community. Executed this 11th day of April 2023.
Thank you. I just want to take an opportunity and thank the county commissioners for this honor. Just so y'all know, there's over 380 volunteers who do give of their time, and she actually took part in my speech here, the well over 52,000 hours that the volunteers have donated to not only the Citrus County Sheriff's Office, but the citizens, visitors, Citrus County. They do a -- just a wonderful thing by giving of their time. And like she did mention, there's over 23 different opportunities, or 23 different areas that the volunteers do provide services to the county, the sheriff's office, the citizens. I just can't say enough for these folks, and I'm going to give them a round of applause. Thank you. Thank y'all.
Will those individuals representing the National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week please come forward? Whereas the animal control officers provide outstanding service and public safety on a daily basis to the citizens of the county. And whereas the animal control officers are commended for the many dedicated and long hours of service they perform in serving this community, and for fulfilling their commitment to providing the highest and most efficient level of customer service. And whereas Citrus County wishes to recognize the Citrus County animal control officers for their services, which is in keeping with the long and distinguished tradition of the animal control profession. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the week of April 9 through 15, 2023, as National Animal Control Officers Appreciation Week, and joins in honoring the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our citizens and animals safe. Executed this 11th day of April 2023. Whereas Citrus County, Florida, supports policies of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Office in the Minority Health -- the Office of Minority Health, who observe National Minority Health Month to highlight the importance of improving the health of racial and ethnic minorities by promoting health equity, eliminating health disparities, thereby improving the health of all groups within our community. And whereas racial and ethnic minorities account for the smallest population in Citrus County, yet they are the heaviest burden as it relates to poor health outcomes. And whereas the Florida Department of Health in Citrus County, in partnership with the county, has assembled a coalition to develop a work plan to address health inequity and disparities in the county. And whereas Citrus County believes there are important, long-term community benefits to be gained by working to improve the health outcomes of minority and ethnic populations. And whereas community partners can work together to ensure that access to health care and healthy living opportunities are available to all residents and community members. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does proclaim April 2023 as Minority Health Month, and challenges all governmental entities, business, students, parents, and residents within the county to participate in the second annual National Minority Health Month and help end health inequity and health disparities in Citrus County. Executed this 11th day of April 2023.
Just real quick, we want to thank the BOCC. National Minority Health Month is celebrated every year in April. It builds awareness about the disproportionate burden of premature death and illness in people from racial and ethnic minority groups. It also encourages action through health education, early detection, and control of disease complications. This year, the Department of Health, along with the Health Equity and Disparities Coalition, will be hosting our second annual Minority Health Fair in Crystal River at the George Washington Carver Community Center on April 15. That's the Saturday. From 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., the fair will offer no-cost health screenings and education, including blood pressure screenings, glucose, A1C, and cholesterol checks, nutrition education, and hemoglobin checks, safe sleep and breastfeeding education, COVID-19 vaccination information, low- and no-cost car seat information. We'll be planting vegetables, giving away healthy snacks. There'll be a prize raffle, grocery gift cards, and many other giveaways, and all are welcome. Thank you.
Last but not least, will those representing the Fair Housing Month please come forward? Whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted in April 11, 1968, enshrined into federal law the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, or disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities. And whereas Citrus County is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And whereas our social fabric, the economy, health, and environment are strengthened in diverse, inclusive communities. More than 50 years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists, and many communities remain segregated. Acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Fair Housing Month in Citrus County. As an inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promoting appropriate activities by private and public entities to provide and advocate for equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of Citrus County, Florida. Executed this 11th day of April 2023.
At this time, we're going to do open to the public, but at 1:30, I'm going to -- it's I'm going to take a break if we're not done with the open to the public. So if you would like to speak to the board at this time, please come forward, fill out a green card. You'll have three minutes to speak unless you have a letter on file, and you will get five minutes if you're registered as a group. All comments are directed to me, the chairman. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Paul Reinhardt, voluntary lobbyist in Tallahassee and watchdog of our citizens. The Lomond Firm owners purchased Monkey Island. They also own a local resort and bar nearby. The monkeys on the island are their property. Next, they set up a nonprofit to solicit funds to restore the habitat they own. They're coming to the county asking $98,000 or more. I checked the public record on campaign contributions, and Commissioner Finnegan received a $350 contribution from the Lomonds. When I brought cases with my attorney, we found it necessary sometimes to recuse both state and federal judges from hearing cases because of the rule of thumb is one must avoid the appearance of impropriety. That extends to every branch of government. Plus, Commissioner Finnegan owns an air conditioner company that may submit a bid in the monkey business. We have monkeys stranded on a little patch of land named an island. That's not to be supported or encouraged according to animal welfare groups I've contacted. I'm always drawn into dealing with monkey business. We had a local car dealer mogul attempting to sell land to Communist China nearby for a monkey farm for private experimentation. He also donated extensively to our local politician's campaign. I was tipped off early by some of the remaining Dixiecrats in Levy and Swanee Counties to prevent this. I promptly notified the Taiwanese Council in Washington, D.C., to arrive by plane at DeSantis's office, and instructed them not to leave until the matter was resolved. I couldn't trust our own government not to sell us out to the communists. That's pretty sad. Why not use the money to first help our underclass in Citrus County? We can't even house our homeless. Let's encourage the working class to properly support themselves by encouraging a private bus line to have a commuter bus, to have stops in Homosassa, Crystal River, Invenus, and Beverly Hills to transport workers to distribution centers and industrial parks in nearby Ocala. It would be a great partnership with those companies to actually get a stable workforce by helping our citizens. Instead, we are in the monkey business. As Chuck Berry said, we have too much monkey business to be involved in. Gary Hart, a prior candidate for the United States Presidency, had a photo taken on his boat off of Bimini with a girlfriend, and the boat was named Monkey Business. That monkey business ended his political career and sunk him. Stop the corporate welfare. Tell these lawyers we need them in Tallahassee to defend people's rights regarding the free kill law and tort reform. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good -- sorry. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Nathan Sharp. I'm a small business owner here in Citrus County. Commissioners, today I rise to speak in support of local government. More than 50 years ago, voters in the state of Florida enshrined in the state constitution the idea that the best form of government is the one closest to the people, and home rule became a part of law here in our sunshine state. Over the last two decades, at the behest of big developers, big corporations, and frankly, big donors, the party of small government has chipped away at the power of county and city governments through legislation passed by the Florida Legislature. This session is exceptional in the number of preemption bills, most of which have been supported by our own state legislatures, that will take power away from this body and take power away from our local citizens. These number of bad bills are out there in Tallahassee. I'm just going to talk about two of them. HB 439, also SB 1604, the land use and development regulations, has passed through two committees in both chambers. These builder-sponsored bills would end counties and cities' ability to deny a proposed land use plan change because there aren't enough roads, schools, and other infrastructure to support that development. Again, a big giveaway to big developers. HB 383, SB 346, public construction is being fast-tracked through both chambers and makes major changes to rules regarding local preferences for public works projects. This bill preempts local governments from having a local preference for vendors for all projects, even if they're funded fully by the county. So there are a number of items on your agenda today that would not be allowed to have any sort of local preference. So can you tell us what you've done to push back against this harmful legislation, and what you're hearing from Representative Missoula and Senator Engolia? Have you begun calculating the financial impact bills like this will have on our community? And what can we as citizens do to help protect our citizens in this county? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp.
Sabrina Watson. I'll be speaking for Exceptional Life Project today, please. Thank you. Sabrina Watson, LaCanto, Florida. I too want to talk about monkey business, but I'm going to talk about a little more than one monkey business item. I want to talk a little bit about con jobs. We got a whole gob of con jobs going on in Citrus County. The first one I'd like to start with is a man named Mr. John Pritchard, who's the director of the Citrus County Visitor Bureau. It seems that he likes to spend our money. In January, this man stated in The Chronicle that Citrus had a slowdown in international visitors, and tourism was down 20%. Yet, an article in The Chronicle in December 2022 discussed a significant increase in tourism in Citrus for three years in a row. So rather than address this, he decides to ask for $55,000 to market to LBGTQ here in Citrus County, or to bring them here to Citrus County. I'm not sure. He didn't get the money, apparently. That got pulled from the agenda. But I'm not sure what this dude's agenda is, or what it is that he thinks he's supposed to be doing. If we have an increase in tourism, why do we need to focus on any one particular group of people? Why not just focus on people? I've said this before. Then it appears that Mr. Pritchard is helping out, save Crystal River, get $250,000 to match the $250,000 they also got to help clean up the waterways in Crystal River. People seem to forget, though, that this is a vicious cycle because we actually have a pollution-for-profit con job going here in the county. So they clean it up, and this particular board, right here, sits right here, pollutes it the very next day. And this cycle goes on and on and on and on. We've talked about it a number of times. We now have three nonprofits in Citrus County with big money to clean up waterways that this very board pollutes the very next day. The maps can be found on the Fish and Wildlife Commission's site, showing exactly where they spray products that cause cancer, kill animals, kill fish, kill birds, and probably ultimately kill people, since the FWC is embroiled in their own lawsuit currently. So I missed something of Mr. Pritchard here I need to go back to. Well, I'm finishing with Mr. Pritchard. Last but not least, it appears he used public funds on his business trip, like he didn't know what he was doing. Mr. Howard gave him three days off without pay as a punishment. Come on now, Mr. Howard, we thought you were better than that. I would like to know if there is a investigation happening into this business trip. It appears that he used his credit card for the Citrus County Visitors Bureau to pay for personal things. I'd like to know if there's an investigation. I'd like to know if this man is being terminated. Three days off without pay is a joke. Now we're talking about laws for thee and not me. There should be charges levied against this man. He's an adult man. He knows exactly what he's doing. He didn't accidentally forget which card he was using. Nobody does that. Let's see. Up next, I've already talked about livestream. I beat that to death. But once again, I want to make sure that people are aware of the con that's going on. We got lobbyist Jean McGee getting paid $60,000 a year by this board to, in fact, sell this very board on livestream, who he's also being paid by. So I would encourage this board, when that contract is up in July, to cancel it. Let's see. What else have I got here? Last but not least, of course, is Monkey Island, which I think monkey business, Paul covered pretty well. The Lomonds purchased the Riverside Resort. They're a multimillion-dollar law firm. They purchased the resort. They also purchased the island, and they purchased the monkeys. They, in fact, own it all. So now we got a nonprofit that's soliciting from the public to refurbish their private property, and they're on the agenda today to ask the taxpayers to refurbish their private property. I mean, when do the shenanigans end? So then, of course, there's the last million-dollar question, and I apologize, but will Commissioner Finnegan be recusing herself from this vote, since she received $350 in campaign? Finnegan be recusing herself from this vote since she received $350 in campaign donations from this organization? Not the 501(c)(3) that they've now created, but the actual resort itself. $350 for $98,000 seems like a pretty screaming deal to me. So we'll see how that goes. It's a shame. All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And after you, we're going to take a break. How many more speakers do we have? Two? Okay, we'll just zip through this really fast.
All right. Hello, my name is Paul Cattucci from Inverness, Florida. I'm actually here to speak due to permitting issues that I'm experiencing with my haunted attraction. So the way the county ordinance is written right now, the permits are limited to seven days per, or not seven days, seven days per occurrence with three occurrences per calendar year. So for a haunted attraction, as you know, it's Halloween season, fall. It should be, you know, the month of October. So what I'm trying to do is, in the past, since it's limited to three, I've pulled multiple permits for the event. What I'd like to see is the permit be extended to 14 days so I can just pull the same two permits like I have been, but I'm able to be open the whole month of October rather than just the two weeks because there's a lot of money riding on a very short window to make money there. And then that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll discuss that. Do you mind coming? We're going to do the 1:30 time certain. You'll be first in line. Thank you. So at this time, we're going to go to our time certain H1.
Commissioners, Mr. Administrator Beth, always a pleasure to see all of you this afternoon. I'm very, very pleased to acknowledge the outstanding work of the team in the Clerk's Financial Division for another year of being awarded the Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association. I would like to recognize my staff by calling out their names. Chief of Staff Tracy Phillips, my Chief of Financial Services Shelley Sensone, Senior Financial Analyst Susan Sullivan, Accounting Services Director Heather Ewing, Alexandra Fontanaz, Sharice Parish, Doreen Budd, Elizabeth Atkinson, Jody Wilkinson, Julie Pitts, and Patty Wood. This document that was actually presented to the board two weeks ago, or latter part of March, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, this award is for the annual financial report ending 2021. It has to go through an extensive review process, and it takes that long for it to go through that qualification for the award to be presented. To present the award today to the clerk and to the board is my colleague to the north, the Honorable Clerk Greg Harrell. Clerk has been, Greg has been the Clerk of the Court and Comptroller for Marion County since January of 2021. He grew up in Ocala and is the immediate past president of the United Way of Marion County and is the former president of the Marion County Bar Association. Clerk Harrell received a doctorate from UF, Levin College of Law, and practiced law in the private sector for 14 years before becoming general counsel to the Marion County Clerk's Office in 2013. Clerk Harrell currently serves as the Secretary of the Florida Court Clerks and Comptrollers Statewide Executive Committee. Greg, welcome.
Thank you, Angela. Members of the County Commission, thank you. I am Greg Harrell. I'm the Marion County Clerk of Court and Comptroller. It's definitely an honor and a privilege to be with you here today. I know what local service entails, and I applaud you and thank you for your service. I know it's not always the easiest job, but I believe we live in a time and age where it is vitally important that you provide that service. So thank you for that service. As the Honorable Angela Vick just so graciously mentioned, it is also an honor and a privilege to be with you here today to help recognize her and her team for another remarkable accomplishment. I believe your materials include the press release that the office did, our supporting materials about the award. It's quite a heavy plaque, so I'm going to try not to drop it here because they've earned it so many years in a row. But the Certificate of Achievement from GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, these days of both the United States and Canada, is, in fact, the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting. It is basically the preeminent accounting award in local government given by the preeminent organization. So for the Citrus County Clerk of Court and Comptroller's Office to receive that for the 24th consecutive year is something to applaud and congratulate. The Clerk's Office also, each year, publishes something called the Popular Annual Financial Report. If you've ever seen the 1,000-plus-page ACFER with all of the details that you all have to grapple with when you're forming and dealing with your county budget, you know how entertaining that document can be. A lot of numbers, pretty boring, but it's important stuff. Well, the PACER is a document that's much more user-friendly, that's something that can help tell the story both from the Clerk's Office's perspective and from the county administration and the county administrators. It's basically a document that can give the transparency and the trust to the public, to your constituents, and provide them with the information they need to ask you the pertinent questions. So it is also an excellent thing that Clerk Vick and her team have, again, received recognition for outstanding achievement with the PACER document. As a point of personal privilege, I will tell you that I have the honor in going through what we call in clerk world as our new clerk academy with Clerk Vick, who led that organization. And it was at a very interesting time because about a third of the clerks in the state of Florida had either retired or moved on to different things. And it fell upon Clerk Vick to help train about a third of the counties and state of Florida's new clerks. I had the privilege of being in her class. She was our class principal, so to speak. And we had the opportunity to have lunch today before this meeting, and I told her, and had not had the opportunity to do that before now, that one of her great legacies with that class was her impressing upon me and my fellow new clerk classmates the importance of a PACER because it is that conduit between the complicated, detailed budget that county commissions across the state deal with and the public. It's essentially a bridge between them so they know what local government is doing, how they're funding it, where they are prioritizing the county's money. So thank you for that legacy. As any good leader knows, we are really just a product of the team that we surround us with. So Clerk Vick was right to honor those distinguished employees and team members of her that helped her get here. I will say and take another point of personal privilege that her chief deputy, I've lost track of Tracy Phillips, is fantastic, the type of person that my team in Marion County can pick up the phone and call, get an answer to, and really work collaboratively with. We appreciate that. I'll also say that Clerk Vick hired one of our employees in the Finance Department, Ms. Ewing, who she recognized, who was from here. And I was actually happy to see Ms. Ewing come home and provide the good service because I knew she was in good hands, and I knew she would do a good job for our neighbors here. Citrus County and Marion County are in the Fifth Judicial Circuit together. We are neighbors as this neck of the woods in Florida continues to grow. I think it's going to be vitally important that this commission, that the Marion County Commission, works together. Know that I in Marion County am happy to help you guys out however we can. We're going to have to be good partners as Florida grows, and this particular part of Florida is really growing. Hopefully, you guys will be good partners with us in favor of prudent development, prudent government. And I certainly know that Clerk Vick is setting a shining light, an example, not just for the people here in Citrus County, I almost said Marion County, but statewide. Know that you have somebody you can be proud of in that seat, in this office, somebody who is a friend and a mentor to me, but is also somebody that is a tremendous credit to the state of Florida and to Citrus County. So in that regard, and this is the actual ACFER with all of the details in there, I'm sure some members of the public know about that. This really is a weighty plaque. I think it's marble. You could build a kitchen counter out of this thing.
You could, actually.
But I am going to present to you my friend, my colleague, Clerk Vick. Do you want to present it?
Well, I think we'll ask the commission to come down.
Excellent.
If you don't mind, and we'll get a photo with it. It's all of us together.
Very good.
I forgot the PACER.
That's okay. That's okay.
That's okay. We'll do another photo with that outside.
Okay. Very good.
If that's okay.
Awesome. Let me. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to my team. Thank you to the team.
I knew you were coming.
Yes, that's right. I gotta wear my boots, too. I am an Ocala supporter. I will present this.
Mark my hour.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I didn't know it was 24. I forget how many years. It's so cool.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks for the opportunity. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you guys. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I didn't know it was 24. I forget how many years. It's so cool.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks for the opportunity. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you guys. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. I didn't know it was 24. I forget how many years. It's so cool.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And congratulations. Job well done. Madam, if you'd like to come back to open to the public, I think you were first in line. Get back in the queue, if you will.
Thank you very much. My name is Alice Weir, and obviously, I did not do near as much research on the subject of Monkey Island as the lady who spoke prior. I did not realize that it was owned by a private individual, and I am wondering why in the world they would request money from the county, which is taxpayer money, and what would be the benefit to the county for letting them have this money? I also have not been on that island. I am not privy to exactly what the schedule is. I don't know if these monkeys are confined in any way to this island, or are they free to swim about on the edges or not? But why would they need air conditioning? We all go to places like Casey Crump's, and we sit outside with fans and have our dinner and enjoy ourselves, and it's always a nice breeze. Why would the monkeys require air conditioning if they are not confined in a cement or block building with no way to get a breeze? I think that perhaps someone from that organization that takes care of Monkey Island needs to present exactly what goes on and what type of building they are building, whether they lock them up at night, whether they have a three-sided enclosure where they can just go and come as they please. They're not living in a cement cage. They're not, I just don't understand why they, how they could possibly need air conditioning if they're not confined. And perhaps that they could, the person in charge could give a brief summary to either to all of us as to what actually goes on on Monkey Island. Do we feed them? Do we provide food? Do we provide daily care, water, whatever? And what the life is like for these animals? They have been there for decades. I presume it's of their own volition and not because they are caged. I don't know. But maybe, I know I'm not the only one in Citrus County that doesn't know these things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Diane Liptak, Hernando County. I moved here, I bought property in 2005 in Hernando County. My sister lives in Citrus, and one of the very first places she took us to was Monkey Island and the bar. And she loved it and took us out there. It was actually really cool, and you sit, you watch the monkeys out on this tiny little island from which they cannot get away from. It's not a matter of whether they choose to be there. It's, they're there for life or until somebody takes them away. She said, now, my sister has been a volunteer at Citrus County Animal Shelter for years. She volunteers at a wildlife rescue. She's worked, volunteered at a pit bull rescue in Hernando, at various other rescues. The wildlife rescue, I think, is in Homosassa. And she's been involved with Snippet and Focus, which take care of cats, getting them neutered spade and the shots. So for her to be concerned about these monkeys was serious. I don't know what she ever did about it, but she said her husband and she would attend that bar frequently so that she could track the condition of the monkeys. And over the years, the numbers deteriorated. She said, from what they could see, it never looked like they were in great shape. It looked like they were throwing food at the island. There'd be bananas tossed and whatever other foods they were giving them. But she'd never seen or heard of doctors going over to vaccinate or care or any repairs being done to the living facilities for them, which are just man-made boxes of sorts up in the trees. So I don't know that we need to be paying anybody to be taking care of these animals. If this company actually bought them, they bought them knowing what they were getting into. And this is not, actually, my thought on it is the island should be closed. I hate to say that we need to take away an entertainment value for a bar that's been there forever, but these monkeys, from what my sister has seen at least, are not receiving the care they deserve. And then also wanted to address the livestream situation. I've got a copy of the newspaper release which says that Hernando County is considering possibly withdrawing from the agreement in which they had agreed to donate, contribute $2 million to the facility. But there have been enough oppositional statements made against the livestream facility that, amongst other reasons, for other reasons, and they're considering withdrawing it. But it probably also has to do with the fact that the hospital might be considering being built. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Brad Benson, Hernando County. I was up here last weekend, or last time we had a meeting to talk about the Baker Act facility. But as part of that, we had noticed that there was a Moms for Liberty link on your website, and I spoke about that and promised that I would provide you all with the evidence that this Moms for Liberty, which ostensibly is doing stuff for our schools and getting the porn out of the libraries, has a Chinese connection to a company called Cogency Global. It's a Hong Kong company which greases the skids so that American businesses and others can do businesses in foreign countries. And I just don't know why a patriotic group of moms would need to do business with China. So I provided Mr. Slabak a letter with the documentation, provided the same thing to our B.O.C.C. this morning. Regarding the monkeys, I guess at some point, this may sound terrible, but you know our wonderful people that provide our food are planning on giving these NMRA
Good morning. Brad Benson, Hernando County. I was up here last weekend, or last, last time we had a meeting to talk about the Baker Act facility. But as part of that, we had noticed that there was a Moms for Liberty link on your website, and I spoke about that and promised that I would provide you all with the evidence that this Moms for Liberty, which ostensibly is doing stuff for our schools and getting the porn out of the libraries, has a Chinese connection to a company called Cogency Global. It's a Hong Kong company which greases the skids so that American businesses and others can do businesses in foreign countries. And I just don't know why a patriotic group of moms would need to do business with China. So I provided New Slabak a letter with the documentation, provided the same thing to our B O C C this morning. Regarding the monkeys, I guess at some point, this may sound terrible, but you know, our wonderful people that provide our food are planning on giving these N M R A vaccine, genetic modifying vaccines to our poultry, our cows, our chickens, our pigs, and maybe, maybe we should just eat the monkeys. So have a nice day.
You went a bridge too far with that one, I think. Next speaker, please.
Teri Webber-Nellis, Inverness Village 4. I have one question to ask of Citrus County today. How is it legal in this county for anyone to remove the grass weeds or any other growth on public roads and leave them dirt? What I have found is that it's a misdemeanor in Florida if anyone does this and obstructs any public road, which then endangers the safe movement of vehicles and pedestrians. We came before the board months back, and our main concern was the status of the MSBU that Anton Van Uzen and his attorney, Anna Long, had begun. Our other concern was the condition of the roads, which we feel are unsafe and puts all residents in harm's way. These sand roads didn't just magically appear. I have provided proof to the county repeatedly with information as to who has touched the roads. Removing the grass and the weeds from these roads caused them to wash out during heavy rainstorms and obstruct safe movement. I reached out to the county for the first time about the flooding in the roads on October 15 of 2021, and my patience is running thin. Commissioner Davis is well aware of my thoughts on the guidance that commissioners receive from the county attorney as well as the former administrator. I believe that after several intense and at times not so pleasant conversations I've had with Commissioner Davis, she understands where I'm coming from, and I'm beginning to understand what the county can and can't do. I feel that we both respect each other, and it's through those tough talks that things can get done. I believe in finding a solution to a problem and not in the phrase, "Our hands are tied." Another phrase I hear a lot is smart growth. There is nothing smart about the type of growth that is happening in IV4. This disaster is in Commissioner Davis's district, but that doesn't mean this builder won't be doing it in another district. I'm asking you to please work together to go that extra mile to help our district and hold these people accountable. Please find an affordable, affordable solution to this problem that the county has known about for years. I called the building department and left a message for Mr. Green to get all the complaints against VanderVall Construction to the commissioners so that you can see the pattern that Commissioner Schleba discussed at the last meeting. There is one commissioner who amazes me with their math skills. Do the math on the cost for infrastructure and roads years ago when the county first knew about this situation versus today and what you're holding us as homeowners responsible for. Do that math. Eight years of Ron Kitchen's reign, this is my personal opinion, and I can read everybody's face when we bring up that name, has been a nightmare for Citrus County, and IV4 is a perfect example of what he did.
Thank you, Teri.
You're welcome.
Next speaker, please.
Gwen Martin and I live in Inverness Village 4.
Could I have your first name and last?
Gwen Martin.
Gwen Martin. Okay, sorry. I thought you said Gwen Martin and I.
No, it would be Gwen with a G. We got that?
Thank you.
Okay, my question on Inverness Village 4. Any updates on the situation in Inverness Village 4? We were told of a workshop for more information. Is this in the works? We are getting ready, and we are getting into the snowbirds returning home with no answers. And yes, the last administration's negative views on snowbirds. Well, my opinion, snowbirds pay taxes in the state of Florida for the entire year and only use your resources during the winter. That's a pretty good deal. We also have many out-of-state residents building in Inverness 4. Will this workshop be set up to hear our concerns and not just to listen? We had a workshop before. I was in the state of Iowa. I couldn't open my mouth. I could only listen to the people that were at the meeting. It also has been stated that the present board of the commissioners have done more for us than the past board. What have you done? Meeting upon meetings with no answers. This situation is not going to magically disappear like the roads magically appeared in Inverness 4. Several residents have been asked by commissioners if we have reached out to an attorney. Why was the whole judicial system put in place? We have laws regulating every day of our lives. Who pays the commissioners? What responsibilities to the citizens of the county do they have? So in response to getting a lawyer, let's just do away with our government and everyone hire an attorney, and then my tax dollars can pay for my private attorney. Last but not least, this is a very, this is a concern of all the residents. We seem to have the perfect roads for dirt bikes and four-wheelers. Last week on one particular day, the dirt bikes and four-wheelers were racing up and down the roads. No, they don't live in Inverness 4. Not to mention the dust flying and the decibels overload. A resident called law enforcement at that time in Citrus County and told them what was happening. Their response to this resident, "It's the Wild West out there. You don't have roads, no speed limit signs, no stop signs, and we can't enforce anything out there. So much for our safety." What's the response going to be for the first EMS or fire when we call?
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you. This time we'll close the public comment portion of this meeting. Commissioners, is there anything you would like to address? Commissioner Davis.
Since we ended with IV4, we'll start with IV4. So I toured it again yesterday, and I had someone who knows a lot of things in the truck with me to try to get their opinion on where we can go from here. And as we came through the first section of Inverness Villages, the one that was created and fixed a number of years ago, I want to say 2016, there's barrel tile roofs, there's pavement, there's drainage, there's beautiful landscaping, beautiful homes, and that's the entryway. And as you crest the hill, my passenger said, "Oh, boy. It looks like Wild West. It looks like second world country. It looks horrific from the hilltop." And the problem is, is that I believe there's a lot of bait and switch happening. That's how a lot of out-of-staters, a lot of out-of-country Europeans are buying those lots. And so to answer Gwen's question, I think it was Gwen who said, "This commission has done more than the prior commission." The prior commission was led by someone who said, "Buy or beware. You got yourself into this mess. At least I take your phone calls. At least I show up. At least we do have the meetings. We're trying." This passenger listened to Teri, list off all, she's been through SWFMD, she's been through DEP, she's talked to the Attorney General, she's talked to the B O C C. She has been through every single government entity, and this seems to be a loophole where this, these persons can navigate all the rules to escape us doing anything. Because I can guarantee you, we want this fixed because we don't want to have to deal with this anymore. That's one tiny little patch in a big county, and we've got some huge challenges. We would love to get this thing fixed. But as I took the tour, I was absolutely blown away by the fact that, okay, so there's the original section that I first saw months ago, then, or a year ago. Then I went back, and then the next section, it's now doubled in size as of months ago. Now, from the original, it's tripled in size. They are raping live, huge live oaks. They are running over gopher tortoises. They are destroying that without any plan from SWFMD, without any drainage, without any archaeological review. You know how many Native American mounds we have in Florida? They are ruining old Florida, and they're doing it without a master plan. And, and low and behold, talk about government not talking to each other. The whole reason this got opened up is because Inverness decided to run water lines in there, and I believe they didn't even pull a permit from the county. I'm not saying we would have been smart enough to stop it or been able to legally stop it, but at least, why aren't we talking to Inverness about this? Because you know what? That third section that they've just opened is all full of blue pipe. And I ran into an Inverness water person down there. I said, "What are you doing?" He said, "We're laying new water." So the reason that this has gotten unbelievably expensive is because they're building in all the low areas. When we were at the very top, my passenger looked down, and he went, "Wow." I mean, you could just see where the runoff is. He goes, "All those foundations are going to fail because of the runoff not being controlled." So, yeah, I'm angry. And with all, you know, please have this on my agenda item until this is fixed. Every single meeting, because we have got to figure this out. Because the problem's only going to get worse, and when those foundations fail or before, it's going to become a drug den. If you haven't been out there lately, I know you've been out there once. You need to go again. We all need to go over and over again, because I believe Teri is right. If he's been successful in my district, he's coming for yours if he can find failed neighborhoods, failed developers that are platted lots but no roads, and he's going to buy those, and you're going to have to deal with it, too. So enough of my soapbox. Was that good enough, Teri? So monkeys, I'm gonna, we're gonna talk about that on the agenda item. I would just like to say for those who may be wanting to leave the madam in the back, these are tax dollars that are paid by tourists that are gated for tourist use, period, full stop. We cannot do anything outside of that. The monkeys have been there for decades. I remember seeing them when I first moved here in 1978. It's a small island. It's out in the middle of the river. They can't get off the island. There was a decrepit old shelter before. All of that's been torn down. There's going to be a nice shelter. And they do get veterinary and food care by the people who own the bar. But other than that, we'll talk about it when the agenda item comes up. And I believe we, Mr. Kotici, I believe we are catching up with permitting. I can leave that to staff if they want to address it. And Mr. Sharp, preemption is a huge deal. It's awful. And I do, whenever I get the ability, the list, and what to say, and if I agree with it, I do email our politicians in Tallahassee. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Davis said a lot in the last, so I don't need to reiterate for those speakers. Inverness Village 4, I mean, staff would be best to handle that, but Ms. Weber and I did speak about silt fences. I would just address that to staff. I, I'm not sure, but if we could use those, maybe that would, would help. And I'm not sure she's saying that the developer that's not a developer is doing things to the roads, but I don't know if he's supposed to or not. So maybe we could also take a look at that. Paul Joan Reinhardt and Sabrina Watson, you both have a fantastic gift of fiction. It's, it's incredible. So, no, I will not be recusing myself because there's no benefit to me, nor has there ever been. I'm not going to vote on anything for the Lowman family. This will be for the nonprofit Historic Monkey Island. The Lowmans purchased a property, didn't quite want to inherit those monkeys, and they're in the process of trying to fully turn it over to a nonprofit. And that's, that's what's going on for it. The nonprofit feeds them, the nonprofit cares for them, the nonprofit pays the bills. The Lowmans, just like probably many other people sitting in this room that's been to any of their fundraisers, just give to the nonprofit to help the monkeys, as many of us do in Homosassa and around the county.
Ma'am, not from the audience, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Weir, your questions about air conditioning, they come from a lot of people, very valid questions, but nobody in this room and nobody in Homosassa, I assure you, not the nonprofit or not the family that purchased the property, wanted to air condition monkeys. It was the USDA and F W C that has all of these restrictions in place, and they do want a heated and cooled space for the monkeys. So that's government above our level. And they do not swim about. They were put on that island decades ago so they wouldn't be terrorizing Homosassa, and they've made a happy home there ever since. I think Commissioner Davis has rightly talked about T D C money, Mr. Reinhardt, although it sounds wonderful to take that money and help the homeless or bust them. Just not allowed to happen with that money at all. This money has, through the T D C, has to either go to get more tourists here or to help projects by state law geared to something in tourism affected by tourism. You're so gifted at the law, you say, in Tallahassee. Look the law up. I'm, I'm sure you'll have a firm understanding of how that works. So this would be a special project that fits the bill. And I think with that, Ms. Liptak, the monkeys are doing very well, and they do receive vet care. I don't know that they go out to the island. I do know right now they're removed, and they're under care. So I'm not sure on a daily basis if the vets come to them or, or they go off. But yes, it's, it's very heavily monitored, and they are cared for. People just can't randomly even feed them things. They have a special diet. The person that oversees it has to have special credentials. It's a, it's a whole deal. And I think that wraps it up for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Canard.
Thank you. The gentleman who came up and spoke about all of the preemption bills, I agree. And I have spoken with Representative Masulo, most recently when we were in Tallahassee about HB 1197, a bill that I believe Representative Randy Maggard sponsored that would preempt local, local governments from regulating water uses, water setbacks on private property, things that's very broad bill as, as it was written. And when I expressed my concerns to Representative Masulo, he actually got Representative Maggard on the phone and expressed what our concerns were. And we were advised at the time that there were significant changes on the way to the bill, and that as it was currently written is not what would be going before the, the full House if it reaches that point. So ultimately, I don't know what that particular bill will look like, but you had asked what we have been doing about it. I did mention that to Representative Masulo, and he, he very much took it to heart, and I believe fully understood what our concerns were before I left his office. Let's see here. Commissioner Finnegan, I'm glad to hear that you will not be recusing yourself, nor should you. That's your district, and you belong in the discussion and in on the vote. And Inverness Villages 4, we're, and I, I don't, I don't mean this how it's going to come out, but I'm going to say it anyway. We're not going to talk or empathize this problem away. We can visit Inverness Villages 4 every day for the rest of our terms. That's not going to fix the problem. Everybody knows it's a terrible problem out there. I'm sitting here thinking, essentially, we've got three options. We can do nothing about it. We can fix it with public money, but that's illegal, so we can't do that, or private money. And I think the last conversation we had with them was, we were going to come up with what the MSBU was and then vote on putting MSBU in place, whatever that number is. And I remember sitting here saying, "Before we go down this road, you need to understand. It's going to be a big number. It's a big number. Let's get that MSBU number, and let's vote on it. If it's, if it's $5,000 or if it's $100,000, whatever that number is, either that or let's do nothing and move on." There's not, there's not an in-between with this that I've heard the whole time that I, that I've been sitting up here. So that's, that's where, firmly where I sit right now, is I want to see what that MSBU number is, and let's... and let's...
I'm so sorry.
Okay. Let's see what that number is, and then let's vote on it. You know, if we're, if we're not going to support those larger numbers, then let's vote on doing nothing and moving on. And Mr. Kotuchi came up and asked about having a, a longer time span for the temporary permits for a, I believe it's a haunted house in October. And so, I think that's, at least, that, that would require a change, I believe, in our code, or at least in adminis, I don't know if that's administrative regulation, or in our code, probably. So, that, that'd be worth, at some point, getting on the agenda and just having that conversation, getting staff's feedback on what are the unintended consequences. So, I think it's worth at least having that public conversation, and not putting them on the spot today, but bringing those arguments forward and saying, "This is why we, we're okay with it, or we would recommend not doing it." Let's see, what else did we have here? Last thing was Monkey Island. You know, I'll tell you, when we get to it, I will be supporting it. I think that, I think it's highly likely that every commissioner setting up here has, has at one point passed by that island, or at least gone to one of the establishments on either side of the river, and pointed out the monkeys to either family or guests. And, you know, maybe some of the folks who have emailed us or spoken today in opposition to it, they at least think it's a neat enough thing, a unique enough thing to point out to family, guests, whoever they might be with. And it is a unique thing. Thankfully, a, a, a family that, that purchased the resort there, and has invested heavily in our community, thankfully, is a private organization that bought that. You know, if a, if a national hotel chain, or, or a national organization would have purchased that, chances are, they have no use for the monkeys. And the monkeys will be gone, and Monkey Island would be a vacant little hazard to navigation sitting out there. But they didn't go that route. I'm sure that, that, that it is a, that it is a hassle to be involved with it, but it is unique to our community. It's unique to Homosassa. And I think, I think it's a very good use of, of the tourist funds, tourist bed tax funds. I, I would not support pulling this money out of the general fund. So, that's my position on those things.
Thank you. And pardon my interruption. I was asked a question, and I lost myself.
No, no worries. No foul.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bays?
Just a couple of things to address. Nathan Sharp and the bills that he brought forward, it's frustrating to me, because it's, we have a big job in front of us, and it's really hard to follow everything that's going through in the legislature. And I think he said it best when he said that local government is the government closest to the people. And frankly, I think the federal government and the state government has lost their minds. They are way too involved in what goes on at the local government. If they would stick to the legislative policies at their level, we would all be much better off. There's a lot going on in Tallahassee right now, where they are just creating more and more at the local level, and we have no way of monitoring that and gauging it of what it takes to take care of our citizens and have the funds available to do the resources for the projects that we need. So, it goes back to one other thing that I keep saying, we just don't have good communications in our county. I think it would be a very useful tool for us as a county to be able to have some way to communicate with our citizens as these things come down. We can get them out to you. We can have you write letters of support or denial for what's being offered up in Tallahassee, or even the federal government. But I think we have got to start being more proactive on what these government bodies try to impose onto local governments. As far as Inverness Village Four, I'm frustrated. And as crazy as it sounds, I would almost tell you to hire somebody and put them out there round the clock, and fine them like crazy, and make it pay for their salary. Because I, it, it's just, it seems incomprehensible that they can do what they're doing out there and get away with it. And they've seemed to learn the mechanisms on how to maneuver around what's going on. And I'm frustrated. We've had many conversations about it internally. And there, to me, it seems like there has to be something, something that we can do to meet in the middle. I'm done.
Thank you. Did Mr. Sharp leave? Yeah. I have personally spoken to Representative Masulo and Senator Angolia several times about the different bills on there in Tallahassee on the floor. You said it best, local government is closest to the people. You know, I said this actually to the senator, when, when we don't do our job, the voters have control to vote us out. And I think that is what is so strong. And we, you happen to have a board here that really cares and is trying. And I, I think Commissioner Bays said it best, what is happening at the slate, state level and the federal level is just mind-boggling. So, you know, just try to lead by example on a local level, and just keep pushing forward and letting you know we're trying to get these issues that we have in front of us addressed. Paul, I do want to correct you on something. You brought up the car dealer and choosing to sell to the Chinese, and they're going to have monkey experience. That's not happening. Levy County is not allowing that. And when you go to sell a piece of property, if they are using a shell company that is based in America, you don't know that you're selling it to the Chinese. And that is the case. I spoke to, to them, and I said, "How did this happen?" And once that offer was put in and accepted, they would have been, they could not get out of that deal. They were locked in by the laws and the real estate laws. So, to say that, you know, they were profiting off the Chinese, and there was something nefarious there, I just wanted to correct you on that. Monkey, the monkeys will be addressed. It's G, is it?
D1.
D1, excuse me. Inverness Villages Four. I'm going to say this again, and I mean this. This board has worked harder than any previous board in a long time to try to solve this. Once a week, I talk about y'all. I go, I've gone out there. I've gone out with the fire chief. I've spoken with you in front of your houses. This isn't something we're taking lightly, lightly. It's not like, "Oh, we're just having meetings." Every agency we've gone before has given us a reason why we can't do what we need to do. So, I, last week, I was thinking about it. My father was a World War II pilot. I had the opportunity to see what Duke is doing with their new lines, and they're going through some, you know, some areas that don't have roads. And, you know, in World War II, they had mats so that the pilots could land on them. And these are durable, they're almost like Legos that fit together so that you could have roads where you wouldn't have roads. They had them in the Pacific. They've had them in Vietnam. They've had them for many, many years. Duke Energy is using these mats. Now, is it possible that we could look into that at Army surplus stores? This, this would be a fix. This is a product that has been used for over 50 years or more. I, last week, I was like, "Why are we not using these, uh, these, um, runways?" You know, they're, they're using them as roads. So, they can be very expensive if you get new, but there are Army surplus, old World War II area. No, let's try to figure that out. I have not had the time to, to, to investigate how much is out there, how much it would be. But I think that might be a fix for, it, it is, it is a fix. It works. Just to get us through this. We have levied fines. We have a very bad actor, actually with criminal behavior. Like I said, most of us have toured it, if not all of us. You know, you're going to think I'm making a joke about this, but I'm really not. Why don't we put this developer on Monkey Island in a monkey suit and let him pay for what he's doing to these people? And I won't, I mean, let him be humiliated and see what he is doing to people is criminal. But I, I mean, there's only so much that we can do as a board, and you guys know this. So, to say, "Oh, we're just having meetings," that's, that's not, that's not, that's not what we're doing. I think about you, Terry, a lot, probably more than I would want to think about someone. But I understand. I don't, I do understand buyer beware, but I also understand, this was a con job. And he's conning more people every day. And he's profiting from, from this con. If you had somebody come in and bilk money from people, they would be in jail. So, I think, you know, that's my idea right to the, today. Put them on that island. Make them wear a suit. Let's throw bananas at him. I also won't support an MSBU that is over, what, $75,000, $80,000? That, to me, is, I'm not going to do that. And if that means your roads don't get fixed, I'm not going to support that. So, I just need you to know that. And then as far as the permits for the special events, I would love to look at maybe doing something with that, with the code. And Commissioner Davis, you wanted to respond to a couple of things.
Yes, I wanted to thank both Commissioners Canard and Bays. Not that the mats idea isn't great, too, but sorry.
I thought it was brilliant. I'd like to hear the word brilliant, but...
Commissioner Canard reminded me that I should, I think everybody is all up to speed on things, but this is a public meeting. So, we did do the estimate on what it would cost in an MSBU, and it was $80,000 to $100,000 per lot. And I went on record up here as saying that beyond the 50% plus one, and this was before we knew the number, I said, the people who have already invested in center block out there, okay, who have bought, bought and started building a home, if those people, if a large majority of them were in favor of whatever that number was, then I would be willing to do a forced MSBU. But 80 to 100 is number one, not going to fly with virtually anyone in that neighborhood. And number two, would bankrupt a lot of people. So, that's a non-starter. So, the county is looking at getting a tighter estimate. Again, the problem is, is that they have sold and built on the low-lying lots, which means eminent domain. If you have even started the process of building a house that is now an improved lot, and our, for our budgeting purposes, we take the assessed value of something and we triple it because of all the attorney fees that are involved in eminent domain. That's why it's so expensive. So, Commissioner Canard, I am so with you on bringing this thing in for a landing, but we've got one more try on that area. To Commissioner Bays' point, I spent half of Friday driving around a couple of frequent flyer neighborhoods for code violations. And hopefully, I asked for a speaker in the bathroom a long time ago, so I think Mr. Howard can hear me on this. But I would like to see code enforcement, Eric's in the audience, I would like to see code enforcement do routine sweeps on our frequent flyer neighborhoods to try to start cleaning those things up. And I am 100% on board with Commissioner Bays doing frequent sweeps through IV4, catch them in the act, and throw every book at them you legally can. And what I would like on my agenda item every other week is a listing of everything we've done to just annoy them and cost them money, and any other real progress that hopefully we've made. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And at this time, we're going to go move on to regular business. We're on Item E, Board. If you would like to approve, approve the bids in its entirety or approve individually, I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Item E, one through D.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Is there any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes 5-0. Thank you.
Chair, motion to approve E2?
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Davis. This is for budget transfers. A second by Commissioner Canard. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. All, any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0. Zero. E3, Budget Resolutions.
Madam, so are you reading it? Go ahead.
No, go ahead. This is...
Motion to approve E3?
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. I'm looking for a second. Commissioner Finnegan, is there any public comment on the budget resolution for the House, State Housing Initiative Partnership, SHIP, and Cambridge Green's project grant budgets? Seeing none. Any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0. E4, Belmont, Belmont Hills, Unit 3.
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve E4.
Second.
Commissioner Finnegan made a motion. Second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on E4? Seeing none. Any board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes 5-0. E5, deletion of property. I'm looking for a motion for E5.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E5?
Motion by Commissioner Davis. Second by Commissioner Canard. Is there any public comment on E5? Any further board comment? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0. E6, Waste Management and Florida Security Bond.
I'll make a motion to approve E6.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Finnegan. I heard Commissioner Canard first on the second. Is there any public comment on E6? Seeing none. Any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0. Fund Balances, E7. Prove and authorize the chairman to execute a budget resolution to recognize the actual fund balances brought forward from September 30th, 2022. Looking for a motion to approve E7.
Motion to approve E7?
Second.
Commissioner Davis. I heard Commissioner Bays for the second. Is there any public comment on this? This is a very important thing for our budget, and don't have anybody from the public here for it. Is there any further board comment on E7? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0. And thank you, Erin, for all your hard work. Appreciate it. And we will spend this money wisely. E8, Grant Agreement.
Sorry, Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to approve E8.
Thank you, Commissioner Finnegan. Second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on E8, the Grant Agreement for Imperial Gardens Plant Interconnection? Any further board comments? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0. E9, Crystal River Airport Runway Extension.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E9. And Dad, are you watching?
And I'm going to make the second. And so, we have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Slaybaugh. Is there any public comment on this?
Chair, is that A&amp;B?
Yes, I'm sorry.
We got so excited. A&amp;B, approve and authorize the chairman to execute the State of Florida Department of Transportation Financial Assistant Agreement, and approve and authorize the chairman to execute the budget resolution.
He, he lived long enough for us to get it funded.
Did, and, and you know...
Not opened, but funded.
And I want to say, I remember when I was running, before I knew you, and Captain Davis said to me, "Ruthie, I've been trying for 28 years to get this over the..."
More like 40, yeah.
And I said, "Well, you know, I hope to be part of it that makes it happen, and congratulations." Very proud.
I took it the last yard. There was a whole lot of yardage that was gained before I got on the scene.
Well, he's proud. Any further board comment? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0. Congratulations, Captain Davis. Okay, E10.
I'll make a motion to approve E ten.
A, B, and C.
A, B, and C.
Second.
Okay.
I blubbed it on the last one.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan. And I have a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on E ten, resolution lease agreement renewal for the Inverness Airport? Seeing none, any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. We're at outstanding items. Agenda item F.
Just one item, just Betts Farm, we did provide an update, the permit application, they're telling us is estimated to be filed before four fourteen, twenty twenty-three. We'll keep you updated on that. I also heard you when I left earlier, the Inverness Village, we'll add that as well, so you have updates on that each board meeting. I'm sure that you get real time.
You heard what I, what my list was?
I heard it, so we've got that as well.
Thank you.
That concludes those updates.
Thank you. And this is informational only, we don't need a vote. Is anybody from the public, would they like to speak on this? And though we don't have a motion, I would open that opportunity. Seeing none. Thank you. We're at item G, County Administrator Steve Howard, G one.
This is a first for me. I've actually been involved in a lot of things in my career, but not monkeys. But I learned a lot about monkeys over the last couple of weeks and actually was actually out there at Monkey Island yesterday, actually with folks actually out there that actually drove up to it. Actually looking to see the monkeys, and they weren't there from out of state and things like that. So, but this is just being brought forward to you. This was unanimously approved from the TDC back in December. I know the TDC Director's here today, I think also the treasurer of the Historic Monkey Island, Inc., is also in the audience as well, if you have any questions. But this is just being brought forward for your consideration at this time. It was unanimously approved back in December. It's taken a while to actually get to this board. So I think it come forward now, if you have any questions for them. And with that, I'll leave this up to your dialogue and at this point.
Thank you. Board, do you have any comments on G one?
I'll go ahead and make that motion to approve G one.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Cannard. Is there any public comment on G one? Seeing none, is there any board comment? Any board comment? I have some comments and some. I got a lot of calls, a lot of people reaching out to me at dinnertime, when I've been out to dinner and. One thing I do wanna clear up is, you know, this, this was presented to the TDC, and Commissioner Davis was not there. It was during a time when her father was dying and had, and so I don't think it's, you know. I just wanna clear that up, that she wasn't even at this meeting to bring this forward. But I'm a big fan of monkeys. Actually, there was a monkey growing up from the Ringling Circus. I grew up in Sarasota, and his name was Billy. It's a spider monkey, and he would come to all the different houses, and he had a little house that he, in the evening, that he would go and run to, a little tiny treehouse. And Billy was a big part of our childhood, growing up in Sarasota. Come for peanut butter and different things, and we all, I mean, I'm surprised he wasn't just the fattest little monkey. But that being said, the original monkeys came in nineteen sixty, and they were very naughty monkeys. And they were sent to Homo Sassa's Alcatraz because they were very naughty monkeys, and the wildlife park didn't know how to handle them. So that's why they were sent to prison. But these aren't the original monkeys that we're talking about. And we have a community that has truly proven to be dedicated to our animals. And, you know, I have to give it to the HMI. They have, I've been to both fundraising, I have contributed. They have done an excellent job of raising quite a bit of money. They have donations still coming in on their website. It was fifty-five hundred dollars last I saw that is coming in. And, but I would like to see, you know, I have a pushback. I think this is a little bit of a stretch. I, I'd like to see a little bit more fundraising, and could some of this money be put into restoring the river? You know, I think this is great, it's, it's, but if this one penny is able to go, the same penny is able to go to the restoration of the river. I think that's a real priority here. And also, how long until we have to replace these monkeys? That can be very expensive. Is this, you know, I, I just, I just have a little bit of a heartburn about this. And, you know, we're targeted and we're voted in to make the really tough decisions. And this is a tough decision, but it is my job. And I just, right now, giving ninety-eight thousand dollars, I know it's tourism money, but my priority is the river. And if that money could go to the river, because it takes a long time to, to earn ninety-eight thousand dollars. So, you know, I, I'd like to hear what the rest of you have to say about this, but that this is, this is the heartburn I'm having. Commissioner Finnegan.
Thank you. My passion is also the river. I, I live there, but my passion's also the people that live on the river. And this money was approved, the monkeys are gone. HMI, when they took over, has fundraised, but then used that money for vet bills, for feeding, for the care. They just had to build cages out in Brooksville to house these monkeys. They have to pay for it. And all the while, if we don't give the money that they are expecting, that slows this project. I mean, you're saying fundraising, but now we're talking years out. And what does that do to the people, not only in Homo Sassa, but some, some operators in Crystal River and other parts of Citrus County? It's, it's an iconic place, it's for tourists. So we have our tour operators, our captains, whether they're giving tours or they're scallop tours, they all go there. People pay to get money to the TDC, the heads in beds, it's been said, to go see those monkeys. So I feel like if we do not see this project through at this time, it's not just gonna harm one place or one nonprofit. It's going to start spilling in to all of our tourists and the tourism dollars that we bring in. And to the people that are, their whole livelihood is out on that river, making money. So I think we need to do right by them. As far as the TDC, I mean, it was said that under Destination Crystal River, it had Monkey Island there in England. They're trying to bring other countries over to see these monkeys. So the advertising's out there, and we don't have any monkeys. So I feel like we need to, it is a lot of money. They're doing a great job with the monkeys, they have a succession plan in place, so that this contributes to our tourism for years to come, for additional monkeys. I, I'm all for it. I say the TDC approved this, they've been waiting, the monkeys are gone, let's build this and bring our monkeys back. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Finnegan. Commissioner Davis, you look like you wanna say something?
Sure. So you're absolutely right, that was actually the day my dad died. It was, I think, the only time I've skipped a TDC meeting. I do take the board assignments very seriously. So in studying for today, I have to say, I was a little taken aback, having seen and enjoyed the monkeys, Monkey Island, for decades, about an almost two-hundred-thousand-dollar price tag. I'm like, oh, my God, how could this possibly be? I mean, I know things cost more money on an island, just you gotta go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth on a boat, but how can it cost this much? So I would like to, with your indulgence, Chair, the public needs to know what's involved in this almost two-hundred-thousand dollars. We're given half, it's a, it's a match with, if we voted in, we're giving half. The other is a match from the nonprofit. So Phase one, drafting blueprints, building suitable monkey cages for temporary evacuation, demolition of existing monkey house. Now it's three things already. Fifteen eight-inch by twelve-foot poles, new night house, a twelve-by-eight-foot main house with porch, self-contained AC.
Commissioner Davis, where is that in the packet? What page is that?
It should be in your backup. It was, it was the green, it's the green sheets that we were given. I don't know.
Okay.
Here, it's this one.
Right, I have the pack, I have it in my hand. I'm just asking what number, page number.
I don't know, I got this drawn this morning. Anyway.
Page twenty.
I am well aware that many of our residents cannot afford air conditioning. So I really blanch at the thought of giving air conditioning to monkeys. But again, we have been preempted by the powers that be above us. Who did you say, FWC?
USDA.
And USDA, because they are, it's considered a zoo, and so we can't do anything about it. Again, home rule, right? Losing home rule. Install two-hundred-foot of nylon rope to poles, that's enrichment for their essentially zoo enclosure. Landscaping, lighthouse painting, ospreys, nobody's talked about the ospreys. We've got osprey nest pole, predator guard, and materials for nest. Ospreys are one of our most beloved local birds. Total for labor and material Phase one is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand for everything I just listed. Here's where we start leveraging this investment, shall we say. Purchase and installation of four Lorax Pan tilt zoom cameras to include purchase and installation of one Lorax network video recorder. Telecommunications, which is five-hundred-and-seventy inches of wire, all connectors and testing, allowance for electric, and potable water service allowance. Total for Phase two, thirty-five thousand. Phase three, and we've had a recent experience on not paying sixty-nine thousand for pilings and instead paying something like less than ten. So I actually know what a fair price is for pilings, so this, I believe, is a fair price. Supply labor and material to construct the following, drill twenty pilings, it says poles, but I asked, it's pilings, around Monkey Island for new barrier, thirty-three thousand. Total Phase three, thirty-three thousand. Why Phase two leverages this is it's not only for security, it's because we're gonna have a live monkey cam feed, guys. And believe it or not, you may not like monkeys, and I'm not gonna sit there and watch them all day, they kinda creep me out occasionally. But some tourists really like monkeys, and we're gonna have it on our tourism website. So there you go. Is that enough? Yeah, I could keep going.
I just wanna see if you were done.
I'm done.
Thank you. Commissioner Cannard.
Yeah, I'll chime in. I, I am gonna support this, as I said, I think it's a good use of the tourist bed tax dollars. And again, I'll say something else. I know it's gonna sound worse than I mean it to, but eighty-nine thousand dollars would clean about a notebook-sized area of the Homo Sassa River. That river needs millions, and I think we're all on board with that lobbying the state to get those millions of dollars here. I would like to see not only the TDC fund projects like this, but I'd like the TDC to bring some real money forward to start looking at scallop seeding, things like that. Those scallops don't do a darn thing to help clean our rivers, but they bring a lot of, lot of revenue here in the tourists that come to pick them up. As well as the locals that are out there. It generates, it generates economic activity. We know that people come up to look at those monkeys, to see them, to, whether they're on the water or on the shoreline at one of the establishments there. It generates economic activity, and that is badly, sorely what, what is needed. And this is a way that we can use the tourist bed tax dollars to help generate more local economic activity. As I said, I would not support it coming out of the general fund, bed tax dollars, I think it's a good use for it.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bays?
I'm having a really hard time with this one. For me, it's one of those things, I look at it and I think, somebody bought this piece of property, bought this island, and that's how revenue is generated. They knew that when they bought it. The conditions that came with it, and even though I understand we're saying that it's a revenue generator. Most of that revenue is generated out of that facility, that bar, that restaurant, that hotelier. It's a sweep by on those tourism boats. And when we, all the discussions that we've had about tourism, I look at it and I think, oh, my gosh. We just heard in a workshop that we did with our counterparts, talking about the implications of what the tourists are doing in Crystal River, the shoreline. What it's doing to our water quality. And yet, we're still not doing anything to diversify our revenue sources, and we're spending these monies out of these capital project funds, which I think we should be looking at a bigger picture and seeing how we're gonna sequester some of those dollars so that we can bond money to do things that are off of the west coast of Florida and diversate, you know, not put all of our chickens and our eggs in one basket, not our chickens, but our eggs in one basket. So, I mean, to take, we just did two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for Crystal River, and now we're gonna do a hundred thousand dollars for monkeys? I, I just, I don't feel it's prudent.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'll go after your gun.
I think, yes, Commissioner Finnegan?
I do just wanna point out that the monkeys will come back, the island will get built. But if we don't do this now, we're just have, HMI will be paying to keep them in Brooksville. It will only benefit Brooksville, and our guides and our tourism dollars could, could benefit if we bring these monkeys home now. And it is, it is a good use. How much money has Homo Sassa got from TDC versus how much money do they give to the TDC through their heads and bets?
Commissioner Davis?
I wanted to respond to Commissioner Cannard's points about the river. I wanna say this one more time, I've said it at least ten times, but I'm not sure everybody's listening to me. The Homo Sassa River Alliance needs to come make an application to the TDC. We're not gonna go look for you, you need to do an application, just like, say, Crystal River did. And I would suggest about the same amount of money, to go to your point, on getting that rolling. Secondly, we have discussed quite at length several times on the TDC about seeding the scallop beds. And we've had a presentation from FWC, and it's a problematic thing, the biologists are not real crazy about it, and because of the life cycle of the scallop, there is a lot of interest on the TDC. And so we'll continue to kinda look at that and see if there's something we can do for scallops. To Commissioner Bay's point, it is a, I, I have reason to believe, I understand how much money the, basically bars on the river make, and it's a lot. And so I am a little troubled by that, using public money. It's not, it's gated, we can't use it for anything but tourism, just one more time. So I am a little bit troubled by that, but on the other hand, I also hear Commissioner Finnegan saying that they're stuck in Brooksville. What I would like to say is that this new board is very much an activist board with the TDC. I have heard you loud and clear. I'm going, I have the meeting tomorrow morning, I will take that back to the TDC. And I really like the idea, we've always been told the citizens get a little antsy once our one-cent fund, the capital fund, gets to a million dollars. And we've heard it from folks come up to the podium, why don't you use that million dollars to do blah, blah, blah? I'm with you, Commissioner Bays. I think going forward, I hesitate to unravel anything we've done. And so even though I'm torn, I'm leaning towards voting for this, but what I would like to do is going forward, TDC loves that idea, or at least I love that idea, and I will try to sell it to the board that we start hanging on to those monies and be really specific about grouping them up to do things off, maybe even in Commissioner Slaybaugh's district. Mr. Pritchard is a big fan, I guess he's one of the recent devotees of pickleball. And so he's been discussing us having big pickleball courts, and we've talked about travel ball. I've been very much a fan of doing the travel ball expansion. So I, I really like the way you're thinking on that, I really do. And so I'm gonna vote for this now, but I, but I understand where we are with this. And I think we're gonna do a little course correction.
Very good. Commissioner Bays?
It's not really germane to this, but I do wanna point out the fact that. It's not really germane to this, but I do want to point out the fact that the diversification in things like travel ball, expanding our ball field so we can have regulated tournaments. You know, we talk about public safety. Public safety is a huge expense. And especially, and I mean, we see what you're going through on the waterways. And I think if we can start to transition some of the tourism to things that are family activities, that will lessen the need for some of this public safety. But that takes a capital investment. I mean, it's, we're going to have to spend money to expand our ball fields, but it is a good, clean tourist industry. We also had the other conversation in our community about, or in our workshop with the council members from each municipality about cultural. And I think if we start to redefine ourself with some cultural tourism activities, that's another thing that brings a different layer of opportunities into our community. It not only changes the trajectory of maybe the profile of the person moving here and wanting to be a part of our community and professionals, but it'll also bring, tourism will bring those people to our community. So, it's for those reasons that I feel that it's necessary, that we just can't keep spending in the same direction. We're going to have to diversify our way of thinking. And I get what people say about that million dollars, but I also, if you look at other counties, large counties or larger than ours, how they're collecting those dollars and using those for bonding capacity for those programs, so.
Thank you. Anything else?
I love the idea of diversifying. I'm so glad that you have been hearing us. You've had to take a couple lumps, but you have taken it well. You're a professional, and I appreciate all the hard work you do for our county. The one thing that I have always felt that we pigeonhole ourself with in tourism is, you know, the manatee, obviously, scallops. You know, with culture, I mean, what is wrong with opening up, you know, Renaissance festivals, things that are broader range, reenactments, things that, so God forbid, something did happen to the scallops if they dried up or the manatees, that we could still continue to have people being brought into our area. That would be one suggestion I would have. I don't sit on that board. I, again, don't have any tourism in my district, but I'm a big proponent of opening up for tournaments and getting children in Beverly Hills and Citrus Springs scholarship money with beach volleyball. It's a big deal. You can go down to Sarasota and go, and they'd be, every state is represented. I'd love to see us try to work on something like that in my district. I have a lot of children in my district. And so, you know, keep up the good work. I, like I said, I'm, I just have, I have a little bit of a pain with this, but we'll just see what the board says, and thank you for what you do. Anything else? Did I open it up for public comment? So, I never did?
Not yet.
So, we just went and started talking about all this without opening up?
I think you did have open comment.
I thought you did.
I did. Okay. Would anybody like to speak on anything that we have been talking about with Monkey Island? Mr. Pritchard, sir, would you like to say anything? Come up to the dais, please. Give us your name and where you live. You have to fill out a green card. Right up here.
After is fine.
My name's John Ellenbeck. I live in Brooksville, Florida. I also own property in Citrus County as well. And I understand the concerns. With proposal, it's been suggested almost that it's an either-or situation. Do we want to clean our river, or do we want to do this? And I don't think it's really, that's exactly the way to look at it. I understand that over $3 million a year is the budget of the TDC. And this is a lot of money, but it represents less than 3% of the total budget. I'd like to think the other 97% is going to something that will not just benefit us this year, but year after year after year. I think it's a well worthwhile project, and I think it'll be something to be very proud of in the end.
Thank you, sir. Did you give, you gave your name and where you lived?
Yes.
Just fill that card out and give it to Amy, please. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Okay. So, at this time, we'll close the public portion of EG1. Board, what is your pleasure? Yes, ma'am, thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. So, at this time, if there's no additional board comment, we'll take the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I'm sorry, nay. It passes 3-2. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay. G2. Staff update for the public sector, Phase 2.
Todd, come forward, please.
Hi there, I'm Todd Dunn, Chief Information Officer, Citrus County. This is just a brief update about InfoPublic Sector. It's a software program we've been using for over 23 years. Hanson was a product that we used as a Y2K fix, and now it's at 23 years old, it's time to be replaced. We went live with Phase 1 of IPS, InfoPublic Sector, back in 2020, and then, and that was for utilities and public works. And since then, we've been working on Phase 2, which is for the building division, which is going to handle permitting, zoning, planning, code compliance, licensing, and that such. And so, what we'll be looking at is on April 24th, we're going to be going live with this new system. And what we're going to, what need to do is on April 19th, at close of business, we're going to shut down Hanson and all of our public-facing websites that deal with the permitting issues. And we'll need that time to migrate all of our data. With 23 years of data, it's going to take a while for this to run. And by starting Wednesday night, that'll give us enough time to migrate all that old data into the new system, and have also time, if there's any problems or hiccups, that we can get that taken care of. So, even though we've done some training, a lot of training with our staff, we've had onsite trainers, we've done video-based training, we've done training for the contractors, there's still going to be, you know, there's still going to be some issues as people get used to using a new system after using the same one for over 23 years. So, just ask for your patience for everyone. And I also just wanted to thank Shannon Budd, who is the overall project manager for IPS, and Carla Grekka, and Kim Slater, who were the project managers internally for Growth Management. They did a really great job of keeping this thing moving forward and getting this done in a timely manner. Any questions?
Board?
I just want to say thank you. I'm glad to see that we are moving forward with our technology, that this is, has no budget impact because this was previously paid for. So, I appreciate all the hard work. Now, when it goes down on Wednesday, it'll come back up on?
Monday morning.
Monday morning. So, I don't know how much that'll affect?
Right.
The building industry and?
Right. Yeah, we tried to tell them, we put out notifications in the press, social media, emails, signs on the door, everything we can think of, try and reach out to them to let them know. So, there's a cutoff date for requesting inspections and things like that, and then we'll be ready for them Monday morning. And then, we'll use that downtime, too, as an opportunity to train staff internally, just give them a little bit more focused training.
Yeah, some of our subs might need homing pigeons, you know?
Right, right.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Dunn. Commissioner Davis?
You remember meeting with me between election and taking office, and I think you're a little surprised that I knew what an ERP was.
Right, right.
But I have to say, even though IT is so far from my specialty, I am a complete nerd about customer service, and this is going to make a dramatically better interface with our, not only our builders, but also our population, correct?
That's correct.
So, I think you used the example that if you have a pothole on your road, you could actually put in a request for a pothole fill online and actually see the status at any point, correct?
Right, that's something we're able to do now. There's an online portal, and then we'll extend that on to like building permit applications, interfacing with like development plans and things like that.
Yay, 21st century.
Yay, finally.
Congratulations. Well, that's a little premature, after it's done.
It's been a long time since I've heard Y2K.
Right, right, 23 years for us.
Anything else, board? Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Very good. Board read G3, and it's perfect timing because the chief needs to go to his next meeting. And I'm looking for a motion for the resolution regarding a burn ban.
Motion to approve G3.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis, I heard Commissioner Finnegan first. Is there any public comment on G3? Is there any additional board comment? Chief, do you have anything you would like to add? Is that okay, Mr. Howard?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Come forward, please.
Good afternoon. As you know, our drought is, drought index is pretty high right now. And the little bit of rain that we had over the past couple of days hasn't done anything. The drought index has continued to climb. With the wind that we have out there today, it's still drying it out. Our surrounding counties, we have Pasco, Polk, and Hernando County. Hernando County just enacted their burn ban. I'm assuming Sumter will soon follow. The district area supervisor from Florida Forest Service is in support of this. Understand that Forest Service will still issue permits, okay? But those permits will only be for those certified burners, i.e. your commercial burners for property clearing that, you know, that we have commercial businesses coming here for. But of course, they're also certified burners. Are there any questions on how the burn ban works?
I was just trained.
We were, Commissioner Bays and I were just trained on how to set the forest on fire, so.
I find that a little frightening.
It was incredibly frightening.
Different kind of fires, I can attest to.
Yeah. Tall timbers, we learned a lot, and the importance of controlled burns, so also learned about drought conditions, so.
Keep watch on IV4, they're setting fires there.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just for people ask, is, do you come back and let us know when it's supposed to be over? Because I'm sure everyone will ask, how long does it last? And I assume when it stops being dry and windy.
Correct. Typically, you know, our rainy season will be coming next month. Usually, you know, the middle, end of May. Obviously, it's all based on the weather. And then, of course, as I said, you know, Forest Street issues those permits, but they also pay attention to the weather. So, for instance, because of the wind today, they're not issuing any permits in our area, so.
Very good. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
So, board, do you have any other additional comments on G3? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0. G4?
This is a request. The Growth Management Department is requesting an emergency purchase with SafeBuild LLC to provide services for a certified building official, remote plan review services, and onsite inspection services in Citrus County on an as-needed basis, using an hourly rate. Presently, the building department needs additional resources due to staffing shortage. The emergency request should not exceed 50,000. These services would be variety in other counties as well in the region. They've actually hit the ground running already. They have a great track record of helping when we build up with housing and things like that. This will be a great resource just to use on an as-needed basis. Also, I think at some point, you could have almost a concierge service, quite honestly, for different levels of services that'll help you to assist. So, recommend approval of this.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve G4.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on G4?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Howard, can you also tell us, give us an update on what's going on in the building department now? I think you sent an email out and said we are currently?
Correct. We're, I mean, Eric's here, we can bring him up, too, but we're exactly where we need to be at right now. Inspections are up to date, and I think so far we've had good feedback as a result of that. But again, this is just an additional kind of resource. Actually, my counterpart, Pierre, actually in Hernando County, uses a similar service as well. So, I think there's an opportunity here as you go forward as well. So, maybe, Eric, you might just give us a quick update. But, you know, one of the things we're going to continue to emphasize is customer service. And it's not something you talk about, it's something that you demonstrate. So, that's kind of important to make sure that at all levels of the county, and we've got some good relationships across the county, we want to enforce that and reinforce that. But maybe just give a quick update with where we're at.
Yes, we went about a week, week and a half without a commercial electrical inspector on staff. So, that's why we took this corrective action. And within two days of having boots on the ground, SafeBuild was able to clear the deck and catch us up on Thursday and Friday. So, now that we have them on board, it'll be, there's nothing that we can't do. So, we're back to full speed. So, everything's been caught up, and we're back to full speed moving forward.
And I think I want to, you know, continue to encourage Growth Management to reach out to the building community and others to see, how can we do better? You know, for customer service, not to say that we lack in whole areas, but, you know, that that's what this is about, that we are open for business, but how can we help you with your business? And get to know because, but yes if, how can we get there? So, that's important that we continue, you know, to tell that story. And I know staff does an amazing job, and we're going to continue doing that as well.
Thank you. And Eric, I appreciate all you've been doing. You know, we've been pulling, I personally have been pulling permits here for going on 29 years, and, you know, it's always been, it takes too long, the attitudes, different things. I know you're addressing all this, but I would like the public to hear about, will this system help speed up the permit process? Will it help the inspection process? Will it help the backlog? And what about, you know, I'm going to throw this to Commissioner Davis, but what about a rebranding of our building department of, you know, we're here, you know, we're open for business, we're here to serve, you know? Some kind of motto, like you said, you've said it many times, Mr. Howard, but, I mean, would that be something that this board or county would be interested in doing? Because we need to get the message out there that we are welcoming, we are not anti-development, we just want smart and proper development. My district is very ready and primed for development. So, those are a few of the questions I have for you, and then?
Love that idea.
Thank you. And then, we'll let Commissioner Davis wrap it up for us. So, you got my questions? Do you want me to repeat the questions?
I'll do my best. I saw Mr. Howard has angry.
If I can say one thing just for staff, now, I will tell you, I get a lot of compliments across the county, too, from staff, that, a lot of amazing staff that we have, and within the Growth Management Department. So, I just want to make sure for the record.
And please, I think that, you know, I did have the attitude before I was elected that, you know, it was the Hatfields and McCoys, you know, the capulets, and, you know, warring against each other, different departments. I didn't find that. I found the staff that we have to be amazing staff, but we have to be better at communicating this to the public because the, you know, the lies are one bad experience. You know, it takes, what, 10 great experiences to get rid of one bad review? That perception is out there, and we need to, we need to fix it and let the community know that we are welcoming, and we do have an amazing staff, and I'm always going to fight for the staff, and thank you for reminding me of that because, but that is what the perception is.
Yes.
So, my question's permitting, or maybe faster, inspections, backlog.
Yes, so just speaking in broad terms, our office processes between 15,000 and 18,000 permits a year, do between 200 and 300 inspections a day. So, it's very, very high volume. There's a lot of, a lot of people coming and going, a lot of emails, a lot of phone calls, very, very heavy volume. So, inevitably, you'll have, those that work in the customer service industry, inevitably you will have someone that'll be unhappy when you're dealing with that type of volume. So, speaking positively of our staff, those complaints that we get are very, very few compared to the amount of volume that we receive and process. But yes, I've talked to Mr. Howard when I first came on board about rebranding, be more business-friendly. I know that the first big hurdle that we wanted to get past was the introduction of this IPS and becoming fully online and integrated, where people could apply for a permit on their phone. So, I wanted to give that an opportunity to get implemented and to have everyone feel comfortable with it. Speaking of SafeBuild, we've also talked about, as part of the rebranding, and he mentioned it a minute ago, doing a concierge or VIP service where you could go directly to SafeBuild because they're available to us whenever we need them on an hourly basis. And if you want to do an express service, you can go directly to them through us and have them review your plans or do an inspection. It costs us per hour, so we probably have to come to you for a change in our fees to provide that type of service. So, yes, step one, IPS, step two, rebrand, step three is part of, part of the rebranding is doing a, you know, a VIPs-type service through SafeBuild. And then, finally, something that we've talked about, and I actually went And then finally, something that we've talked about, and I actually went to CCBA last month and talked about, is a customer service survey. What do we do well? We want to make sure to keep doing that. What are we doing poorly? We want to make sure to fix that. So we want to get some feedback and, and, you know, I know if you, if you deal with the, with the public sector, you have a survey that says, how are we doing at the end of an email? And you can click a link and it would provide a survey. Or if you are on the phone, would you mind staying for a few minutes and answering a few simple questions on, on how we provide a better service? So those are all the types of things we're, we're looking forward to, to implementing. But I think first step is in two weeks, this IPS, that'll be our primary focus. And then using, using SafeBuild as our partner to provide, the one question I asked SafeBuild was, will ask too, is when can you be here? And then what customer service is our top priority to speak on that? And they were, they were, that was their top priority as well. And then speaking with Crystal River, I know Mr. Howard spoke with their city manager there, and he raved about the customer service that they received from SafeBuild in the city. So I hope that answers your questions.
Did you say it's going to speed up the process of permitting and inspection?
Yes, so it'll provide a backup. So if we ever get bound up or have someone out or on vacation or sick or retire or whatever, they can step in immediately and fix it. If we are getting slow, they can step in and increase in activity. Or if we can make it really fast, if you want to go right to them, we're going to work to provide that option as well.
And also that this money that it's going to cost us is being paid from the permit fees, not from the general fund.
Yes, so the Building Department has an enterprise fund and they have a pretty healthy cash reserve to use for stuff like this when emergencies come into place.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I love this idea. Our former administrator always said that if we staff up enough to meet the, the big growth surge right then, it's, it's difficult for county employees. You can't really, you end up having to lay off, which is horrible for morale when things shrink. So I like this idea of being smart about how many people we have on staff. So if there's a short-term surge or you have some, some out, out sick, et cetera, I love that idea. I would say, I think the VIP, did you call it VIP?
Yes.
Okay. I think that elevated service is also a good idea. I have a little bit of reservation for that, only that I, I, I want to make sure that the average permit time for regular service is within normal, you know, normal standards, right? That we're not, you gotta pay to get something on a normal timeframe, and I'm sure you'll take care of that. In communications, yes, the, we're making a lot of good changes in this county and we need to start talking about it. Mr. Howard's already done a really good job of getting the word out, I believe, through some of his communication strategies, and I think we'll do more of that. And it's not to sell what the county is doing at all. It is to foster better communication between citizens and the county so they do understand what we're working on. And they can better help us grow and point out areas where maybe we can improve, you know? But at least if they know that we're, we got it ninety percent right in a certain area, maybe there's ten percent that needs improvement, then you don't have all that white noise of talking about things that we're actually doing well, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Baze?
No, I just wanted to address the funding. You did that.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you so much. I appreciate what you're doing and thank you for putting out all these fires and hopefully soon you'll be able to do your real job and get us going, moving forward.
Thank you.
So, thank you, sir. I, yes?
Quick question, the update showed it A and B.
Okay, so I had, I have a.
I can amend my motion to A and B, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Commissioner Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And I opened it up to public comment. Is there any additional board comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five zero. Thank you. G five, additional item, Office of Utility Regulation Position.
This is another one, you told me about the kind of, not the alligators. So this is, this area of responsibility, which wasn't on the work chart when you hired me, but has been vacant since about twenty eighteen, some type of position. So I'm asking you to go forward. This is another one that's not coming out of the general fund, there's fees associated with it. But there's a lot of cleanup and a lot of things that we need to do, so I'm asking approval to hire an executive assistant to help in that role. They can also be cross-trained in other areas as well, but this is not a one, it's a need at this point. So I ask for your support to, to go forward with this immediately and get the recruitment going.
Madam Chair.
Very good, thank you, sir. Yes, Commissioner Davis?
Motion to approve G five?
A and B.
A and B?
Excuse me, wait.
Did you say A and B?
I don't see A and B on G five.
On the second page?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay, good thing we got all these people help me out there. So I have a.
Did you second?
Jeff, Jeff seconded.
I'll second it.
Jeff seconded, I'm sorry. Thank you. Commissioner Davis, motion, Commissioner Canard, second. Is there any public comment on G five? This will get us moving forward and it's, I'm, I appreciate you cleaning up our house.
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a lot to this area, but thank you for your support.
And it's a neglected area, most definitely. So thank you. Seeing no further public comment, is there any additional board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Congratulations. Get that position done. Okay, so we did H one, and now we are at item I, Advisory Board Announcements, Nominations, and Appointments. Who would like to start? Do, oh, we don't have any, I'm sorry. I don't know, must need a cup of tea. Committee reports, Jay from Commissioners, Commissioner Canard.
Let me see, what do we have? The MPO. Do you want to give that update or you want me to? The MPO, we had quite a, quite a lengthy presentation on different safety grants that are available from DOT. It was quite lengthy. And it was good to see that, that Citrus County Sheriff's Office has applied for a number of them. I think there's a handful of them that they've applied for. Unfortunately, of the, I believe there were seven or eight categories, we ranked very near the top, which is not where you want to be in comparison to about fifteen other counties our size. So we qualified for grant money in every single area. And, you know, some of the grants, I, I don't, I don't know dollar-wise what they are. It may cost more to apply for them than they actually get out of it. But the Sheriff's Office has applied, like I said, for a handful of those, Hernando County Sheriff's Office, I think they'd applied for one or two of them. There was some discussion about, it was interesting, it was on the, on the agenda to talk about Turkey Oak. And the presentation revolved around which roads should be our priorities for capacity expansion. And it was based on look, current data looking out to two thousand forty-five and which roads still remained in a, in, as a, a passing grade and which ones failed. Without question, given current data, four ninety-one definitely falls to a failing grade from Pine Ridge to two hundred. That was, that was very evident that that is, that should be our focus for expansion of, of capacity, to handle all the trips to and from the Suncoast Parkway. There was some discussion about Cardinal. And even looking out to two thousand forty-five, Cardinal remained with a B grade, but that did not take into account some of the, or really, really any of the, the home sites or the developments that are planned for out there. And so the gentleman making the presentation felt like, once those are included in the calculations, that Cardinal also would likely fall to a failing status in terms of being able to handle the capacity. But he addressed a number of different segments of roads around the county. Without question, though, four ninety-one north from Pine Ridge to, to two hundred is, is where the focus needs to be. That was it.
Thank you, sir. Any other findings? Very good. Commissioner Baze? Commissioner Davis?
Yes, ma'am, I have TDC tomorrow, but last week we had our monthly, it was quarterly, but because we're building a new morgue and medical examiner facility, we're now meeting monthly. And so we are now putting out RFPs, so I need to make essentially a public statement that we, I don't think anybody in Citrus County is within the, the area of influence, but I told them to put Frank Colashon, our Economic Development Director, on the list, and any realtors that we know that have property within that circle. We, we want as many responses for the RFP as we can get. We're doing two different ones. One is land to build, and the other one is, is basically a build, lease build, what is it called? I always forget, with an option to purchase later.
Lease to own?
It's not a lease to own, there's this very specific name to it, but it's basically, it's build a suit for lease purposes, but then we will possibly buy it later. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan?
Yeah, I had the MPO, and this weekend I'll be going to the Executive Board Meeting or Class, MPO Class in Orlando. I did find it interesting that they had advertised it for Turkey Oak. It was disappointing because it was not about Turkey Oak really at all. It, and two of the major roads that are going to be impacted by the Parkway were in my district, and then the other three were spread out between the four of you. And it wasn't advertised that way, so I asked them to re-present it and, and do that properly because it does affect four ninety-one, it does affect Pine Ridge Boulevard, so. And, you know, I have a meeting with Pine Ridge HOA about the roads, and that would have been helpful to have some of them there, so. Doesn't, wasn't any of you that did it? So I did clear it up, but that, that's what I have, and that's what I have this weekend. Other than that, I have nothing, so we'll go to Commissioner Finnegan. Is there anything you'd like to talk about?
At our last meeting, we brought up the signs on the water in Homosassa. We need to move forward with that. Unrelated, I talked to Captain Travis Franklin, FWC in Tallahassee. One last ditch effort saying, you are FWC, I know you don't want more poles in the water. And he said, no, we don't want more sticks in the water, but it has to happen. His signs are regulatory, are informational. He said, by the way, the county was working with the language change for stronger language. And he said that his legal has talked to our legal, and that cannot happen, that they will permit, permit our informational signs, not regulatory signs. And he said that language won't stand. And I said, well, what if somebody wanted regulatory language and they got the language right, yada, yada? And he said, no, we're not, we won't permit that. So I want us all to be on the same page, that we need those signs up. They, they have to say at what, what they said according to FWC. Beth, I don't know if you, I haven't had a chance to talk to our legal, as this was this morning.
I did speak with one of their attorneys this morning about the matter. And I'll go over it with Denise when she returns. But I was given the information as to what language was not to be on the signs, which was the regulatory language. But other portions was fine, and they said our ordinance was fine, too.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
As I recall in our staff briefing, essentially it comes down to, we can stick with the original that said quiet zone, please respect our neighbors, or just quiet zone. So my recommendation from a communications professional standpoint would be quiet zone as large a font as we can, and then let people just assume, you know, because it takes all the teeth out of it to say, please respect our neighbors. Quiet zone sounds kind of regulatory all by itself. So that's what, that would be my choice in the matter.
Okay, and I, I do want to say this. I worked on a year on this. You were not on the board, and this is a problem with Sunshine, because I too was in Tallahassee, and I got a totally different answer. The captain, the main person I spoke to with, you know, with the Boating and Waterways section, they were scheduling an internal meeting, and I was told that maybe perhaps our staff was looking at informational instead of regulatory. So this is a problem with Sunshine people. We're, we're both working on this, I've worked on this for a year, but we can't talk to each other till here, so we're getting in each other's lanes. And I too, I want those signs up, and I'm glad that you're there representing, but I do, do know that I worked a year and made many trips on my own dime. And to be told two different things is a little, a little disconcerting. And so it's concerning to me that I want teeth in it, but at this point, why are we being told two different things? And I was going to bring this up, I've discussed it with staff, I've emailed staff. You know, at this point, put up whatever you want to put up. It's not my district, I don't live on that river, but I did invest a year of my life fighting for this. And so, yeah, I do have some ownership to it because I was told over and over and over we wouldn't even get this quiet noise ordinance, and we did. So now, why are they backpedaling and saying, oh, no, you're looking under, you know, informational signs, you, your, your staff should be going for the regulatory signs, and you're being told the exact opposite? So it is frustrating, but that's also frustrating because it would have been nice to be able to pick up the call to Commissioner Finnegan and say, hey, what did, what did your, what did they say to you? Because this is what they said to me, and this is exactly what government is great at, is pointing us all in the wrong direction and nothing gets done. So I, I will give the information to staff, they'll get it to you, it'll get it to everybody, it'll be public record, and then you can contact those people and say, okay, what, what's real and what's, what's not? Because I've spoken to totally different people and, and, and they were said, we're going to have an internal meeting with the legal staff, and then that legal staff will follow up with BOCC legal. So I'm assuming that's why they called, and then should find out one way or another soon. So. And that's what happened, they had their meeting, I believe, yesterday. They said, talk to legal, and they said, well, the attorney working on it's out, so I, I didn't know if that had made it to you, Beth. But. I, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you. I don't want you to think I'm personally trying to hold up these signs. It's just that I spent a year doing this, working with Alonda McCarty over this, fighting with Denise Lynn over this, fighting with W, FWC, even the parks, fighting with the Parks Department. So I, I want it to be strong, but if, if, you know, if they're giving us different information, I'm going to get it to you, it's yours now, good luck with it. Gets, but I really would like you to really push back on them and make them have, you know, you know, some strength to it, some teeth. Well, I do, I do want to thank you for all the work, and I wasn't a commissioner there, and I feel like the people of Homosassa and, and just people of Citrus County and all over, they're both there, I want to thank you. But they did have that final meeting, and I, I would love to push back, but I asked all the questions that you must have been asking, and it was affirmative. It, it's done, it's legal to legal, and our legal made the determination and got it to your legal. So just, just as the pilings, they told us, and I still have been pushing and following up, and we have to have those pilings. I don't mind if there's new information, doing that push, I just want, we, we had a motion, Mr. Edwards has been working with them about the language, the quiet zone, please respect your neighbors. If nothing else could be done, I would just like us to be all on the same page that that's what we're doing, provided, you know, no extra, you know, if we do that extra push, that we can just move forward with the signs. They, he has told me unequivocally, unequivocally, it, it's not happening. We will not permit your signs with any regulatory language.
FWC told you that?
This morning, yes. Okay. Okay, I've always been against be kind to your neighbor. I, I understand. That it, they're not going to be kind to you. I will, I will say, the, the deputies out there are doing a fantastic job. I talked to the sergeant out there this weekend, the sheriff has been asking about signs with nothing but the Chronicle kindly enough updating about the ordinance, the ordinance being there. It's, it's working a lot. Now, scallop sees. Now scallop season hasn't started yet, so if we could get whatever the sign is before even Memorial Day, that would be fantastic. And I have been working feverishly uh, with Mr. Howard and trying to make that happen. Your efforts are, are appreciated and applauded. I just don't um, want to fight if it's just going to keep pushing things down the road, and then we keep having to come back every two weeks, and it's not getting accomplished.
And I appreciate that, and this is what's so frustrating. Commissioner Cannard said a year and a half ago, "Just put a sign out there that says, 'Be quiet, quiet zone, be nice to your neighbor.'" He said, "Just do that with Crystal River's doing." No, we're going to get in a, Ron Kitchen wanted an enforceable noise ordinance. Remember that, Commissioner Cannard? You said, "Just put a sign up there, it's going to work." So I, I worked to get an enforceable, enforceable noise ordinance. We should have done what Commissioner Cannard said, because that's what we're ending up with. The same exact sign that that gentleman wanted to put up a year and a half ago. What a waste of time. And you weren't on the board, and I understand that, and you've inherited this. But literally, it is the exact same sign, except it has now, in very tiny language, the, the county ordinance.
Your, your time wasn't wasted because we, we have a good ordinance, and that, that's appreciated. That your time was not wasted. The sign, I know, is frustrating to you, but that's just like the icing on the cake, the ordinance is what has the teeth.
Commissioner Cannard?
I hope you heard me, I said you were right.
I don't recall saying it exactly like that, but I appreciate you recognizing that I was correct. Yeah, where, I, I really um, uh, I think, I think there's a lot of effort going into trying to change the language on the sign. And it sounds to me like it's not going to happen. The ordinance is, uh, has been blessed by FWC. I like Commissioner Davis's idea of just putting quiet zone there. It labels it as something rather than just suggesting, as has been discussed, be nice to your neighbors. Uh, quiet zone tends to be, I think comes across as you're, you're, you're entering into something different here. Tone it down a bit. And so if that's something that FWC said they're okay with, then let's just get it done. Now, whether or not it happens by Memorial Day of next year, I, I don't, I don't see it happening this year, but uh, you know, look, I, I don't mean to be a pessimist. I would love to see it happen quickly, but that may be just a little bit optimistic.
Commissioner Davis?
I just wanted to say that I agree with Commissioner Cannard, I don't think that was an accurate impression. I think in her frustration, she pulled up the file from the Scott Files. The Scott impersonation.
His voice is deeper. It's, his slang is deeper, and yeah. Well, thank you, and good luck, Commissioner Finnegan, and I hope it says quiet zone, I love that idea. And I'm, I'm done, I'm handing you the baton, good luck, and go kick butt. So thank you. Okay, so Commissioner Jeff Cannard, do you have anything you'd like to talk about?
Nothing.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bayes?
Well, yes. The people on my side of the county, they just want the weeds off their lake. That's it.
Want the weeds off?
They want the weeds off their lakes.
Okay.
They just put a sign up, "Don't worry about it, we'll take the airboats to it, we'll clean it out, we'll take care of it ourself, you don't have to worry about the noise." They're probably going to join the party, have fun, and not worry about all the rest of this minutia. Go District Four.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, so um, turns out I do now have a national speaking engagement on behalf of Citrus County in July.
On?
For NACO. Um, I'm going to be up there with Kyle Baltuk from Florida Chamber, and we're going to be presenting the Florida Scorecard and the Florida Gap Map as a tool for commissioners across the nation to seed in their own states and talk about having that actual data that we can make better decisions as to where to allocate resources that we have to help more of our citizenry have a better opportunity to thrive. Everyone has an opportunity, but some have a little bit better than others, and um, get our workforce up to par in the state of Florida.
Now, will there be a report of what you've accomplished in Citrus County as far as this?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Very good.
So.
Good job, represent. And um, I don't have anything for District Three, uh, there is some development, it's moving along fine, and we'll be helping our tax base, so that is happening. Um, County Attorney's Office, do you have anything?
No, we don't have anything today.
It's nice seeing you. Um, at this time, then, I'm going to open it back to the public for the second time. If you would like to come forward and speak, is there anything you would like to address? You get three minutes, unless you have a record, uh, letter on file, you get five minutes. Going once, going twice, sold, no public comment. Okay, so um, item R, upcoming meetings. We have a regular meeting April twenty-fifth, Commissioner Cannard will not be here. At one PM, he has an excused absence. At one o'clock here in this um, this room. We have a regular meeting Thursday, May eleventh, at two thousand twenty-three at one PM at Citrus County Courthouse here in this room. And then we have May twenty-third, twenty, now, oh, now, May eleventh, please note, it's a Thursday. It will not be on a Tuesday, that is the one caveat to that. Uh, May eleventh is a Thursday, so don't show up here on Tuesday. Uh, and then we have a regular meeting, May twenty-third, two, it says two thousand and three, but it's really, we can't time travel, so it's two thousand twenty-three at one PM, right here in this room. We have an upcoming workshop for the animal shelter, Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, at nine AM, right here in this building. And we have a pay-in-class study, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, that's a Thursday. Um, again, here in this room at ten AM. We have a workshop for the airports, very exciting, Crystal River and Inverness, June sixth, at nine AM, right here in this room, room one hundred, at nine AM. And then the BOCC Strategic Planning Retreat is Wednesday, July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at nine AM. And, okay, that's uh, in this room also. We have a preliminary budget hearing Wednesday, July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, at the Citrus County Courthouse, room one hundred. It's the governing body of the special library districts at eight thirty AM, fire protection special district at eight forty-five AM, the BOCC at nine AM. And then we have a tentative budget hearing, September seventh, two thousand twenty-three, at five oh one, Citrus County Courthouse, room one hundred. And then the final budget hearing, which is going to be here before we know, and this will be Commissioner Finnegan's first budget. We were, uh, hazed quite a bit, um, Commissioner Davis and I were told, "We were not a real commissioner until you went through the budget, but I can tell you, you are a real commissioner." So uh, whether you've gone through the budget or not, so I appreciate you. Um, so that will be um, September twenty-sixth, Tuesday at five oh one PM, right here in this room. And then the public hearings, um, I had, I, to give that to the county attorney, we'll read the applications at five oh one PM, so we will go in recess now, correct, Amy? Thank you. So we will be in recess till five oh one. Welcome back. Beth, do you have a little something, something for us to read?
I, I do. First, we are here for a public hearing, and I need to say this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, so I need to inquire as to whether any of the commissioners have had any ex parte contact that needs to be disclosed with regard to PUD twenty-two dash zero six.
Is your mic on?
Yes.
Okay.
You want me to repeat that?
No, so you're going to ask, who do you want to start with?
I can start with Commissioner.
I have not had any communication, thank you ma'am.
No ma'am.
No ma'am.
No.
We're here regarding an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, a political subdivision of the state of Florida, amending the Citrus County Land Development Code Atlas by redesignating approximately nineteen acres from the agricultural district to the agricultural district with a planned unit development to allow subdivision of a density of one unit per five acres, providing for applicability, providing for modifications that may arise from consideration at this public hearing, providing for severability, providing for codification and Scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date.
Very good, thank you. At this time, we'll have staff present their case, is that correct, or do we do the?
Do the client.
The applicant.
The applicant, the applicant will present their case.
Unless you don't want to.
Not really.
Hi Brenda.
First of all, I apologize, I don't feel real well, so I sound a little bit like um, a man, but it's me.
You don't have to do that.
I don't have to do this?
Yeah.
Right, well, good afternoon, for the record, my name is Brenda McKenzie, I'm with McKenzie Permitting and Consulting. And I had the pleasure of dealing with Leon McClellan and his brother Christopher. Um, they own MB Dairy Farms, a business on La Canto on four ninety-one. Uh, they purchased property that's almost twenty acres, it was nineteen point nine eight, has two dilapidated existing uh, single wide mobile homes on it. Uh, they're wanting to uh, remove those, demo them, and each one of them want to build their forever um, dream home on it and live there close to their business. Uh, they've divided it, um, Leon is going to get about eight acres because the other parcel has some low-lying areas, so their brother, brother's, other brother is going to be getting a little bit more of the acreage, but both of them will be over five acres each. Um, thank you, Miranda, we've done a lot of dealing back and forth and making all the requirements, and kudos to them and to Joanna and her staff, and Carl Jones and the Building Department. Um, kudos to Carl on everyone uh, joining in and making this um, come together. I think we've met all the concerns, and I'm here today to hopefully have the board of county commissioners uh, have their approval. We did go to PDU, PDC, um, and we had a unanimous vote um, in favor of it, thank you.
Thank you Brenda, I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Board, do you have any questions for the applicant? None, and um, Holly, Commissioner Davis is, um, could not make this meeting, so it's just the four of us. Okay, Miranda, would you like to present your slide?
It'll be short, but yes, I will. Yeah, good evening, commissioners, uh, this application is requesting to establish a PUD in order to subdivide a nineteen-acre tract in the agricultural district. The property is located in La Canto, taking access from South La Canto Highway. The surrounding area consists of conservation and agriculture. The applicant would like to subdivide this property into approximate eight-acre parcel and an approximate eleven-acre parcel. Uh, there is an existing uh, mobile home currently on site, which is proposed to be removed. The applicant seeks to place a new home on each proposed parcel. The property does appear to have wetlands, and flooding appears to uh, to occur periodically towards the southern end of the property. Here's the applicant's proposed master plan. The comprehensive plan and Land Development Code requires at least ten acres per parcel in the agricultural district. Applicants with a pod can have at least a five-acre parcel with fifty percent open space. The applicant has provided a general area of that open space, and, and this will need to be delineated at the time of, time of final platymetal. The applicant is required to preserve open space by either a conservation easement or another mechanism as outlined in the comprehensive plan. And uh, if there are any wetlands on site, they can only count for fifty percent of that open space requirement. Staff does not have any concerns with this application and finds it consistent with the Land Development Code and comprehensive plan. The PDC heard this application on March second and recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, so that would, yes, sir?
I've got a question. Brenda, were the, um, was the applicant okay with the conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the, that's why the southern part's getting a larger portion, because we have to have a greater portion of that preserve or conservation because of the low-lying part was on the south parcel.
Okay.
But they're aware of it, and they're in agreement.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes the public, well, we got to open it to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this application, PUD two dash two-two dash zero six? I see none. Going once, going twice. Okay, we will close the public portion of this application, the public hearing. So now, Board, I'm looking for your direction on PUD dash two-two dash zero six.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Bayes, I'm looking for a second, Commissioner Finnegan, thank you. Is there any public comment on this? One more time, seeing none. Is there any further board comment?
Our um, our county attorney would want to hear that, what it was based on.
Based on competent?
Competent and substantial evidence.
I'll amend my motion.
So that's on the record.
He is absolutely correct, so. Commissioner Bayes, Commissioner Finnegan, based on competent and substantial evidence. And the conditions, how many conditions were there? And the applicant was fine with all the conditions.
There were four conditions.
Four conditions, very good, thank you. So that being said, any further board discussion?
Chair?
Yes?
So that's confirmed with both of them to amend the motion.
Yes ma'am. Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Any further board discussion? Good catch, Commissioner Cannard, um, so at all, anything? Yes? Yes, this, this is, the motion is to direct the chair and the clerk to execute the ordinance for PUD dash two-two dash zero six with the four conditions based on competent and substantial evidence. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes four zero, congratulations. And at this time, it is, what time is it? It is five oh nine, I am going to adjourn this meeting.